Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting for February 2nd, 2023. Please rise to state pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're gonna... Can I get a motion to take stuff out of order?
Motion to take things out of order.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're gonna start with what is on your agenda as number three, the vote on the bond issue. And did you have anything you wanted to say specifically? Okay.
No, just you gotta make all of those motions.
All right. So would one of you go ahead and make... Start the process of making the motions required for the general obligation bond?
Sure. I'll make a motion. The first one is to I move that the sale of the $1,177,090 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds of the town dated February 22nd, 2023, to Key Government Finance, Inc., at the price of $1,214,898.13 with its accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Second motion. I move that the board acknowledge and accept that the bonds shall bear interest semiannually on February 15th and August 15th and each year until maturity or redemption prior to maturity commencing August 15th, 2023, and that the bonds shall be payable on February 15th of the year and in the principal amount and bear interest at the rate as stated below. Do I have to go through the... Okay.
And that's... You do have to read, I think, year...
The year, the amount, and the rate.
The year, the amount, and the rate.
Same thing on the next one, too?
No, the next one, you can eat... When we get there.
Okay. Twenty... Uh, stated below, year 2038, $1,177,090 at an interest rate of 4.736%.
$90.
$90.
What did I say?
You said $90.
$90.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So on this next one, you can say, as stated below, and not read all of them, because this is gonna be part of the permanent record.
Okay. Should've noticed the other two pages before I agreed to this. I move that the board acknowledge and accept that the bonds maturing on February 15th, 2038, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as listed below.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to take turns with Tom. I don't really have to do it.
Oh, I'll get them all. I move that the board acknowledge and accept that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town in whole and not in part at any time on and after February 23rd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the board acknowledge and accept that by establishing the interest rate on the bonds at 4.736% as approved above, the town acknowledges that it has accepted the interest rate lock with premium as that term is defined in the term sheet presented to the town by Key Government Finance, Inc., dated January 26, 2023, the term sheet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the board acknowledge and accept that in the event of a default by the town, in the payment of principal of or interest on the bonds, or if a determination shall have been made by any appropriate federal authority that the interest on bonds of the type and character of the bonds shall be included in the gross income for federal income taxation purposes, then from and after the date of any such event, the interest rate on the bonds shall be increased to the default rate of the taxable rate, as the case may be, as those terms are defined in the term sheet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I move that the board acknowledges and accept that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. An electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents, and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Last one. I move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such action and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effective... affect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. There you go, man. Thank you.
We just need Brad to sign this that as the clerk that... That is a...
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. No insult or slight intended to either direction, saying that you did all these votes, and it was done at an open meeting. Oops, sorry. There you go.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm gonna return to the top of the agenda with the announcements in particular. Some of these are very important with regards to actions that we'll be taking in the future. So the first announcement is that Brookfield is pursuing a grant through the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. The application will seek funds for improvements to Kimball Street located in Brookfield Center. Local officials in consultation with regional planners and engineers have determined the street to be in poor condition. Area residents who have received surveys are encouraged to complete and return them. Residents can also hear about the planned improvements funded through the FY21 CDBG program. Meetings will be... Will occur in the banquet room at the Town Hall, 6th Central Street, as follows. Tuesday, February 14th, 4:30 p.m., meeting with the Brookfield Community Development Group. Thursday, February 16th, 7 p.m. And then FY22-23, CDBG Application Public Hearing. There will be a public meeting to discuss the town's master plan at 6:30 Wednesday, February 15th, in the banquet room at the Town Hall.
Busy week?
Very busy week. Right. So we're not doing it as a joint meeting. Did we have anything to report relative to the budget cycle?
So what are the things that... There was a question about, based on this... I wrote this down on the notes. We can have... One of the things that's missing is to be determined is mailing a warrant to register the voters. I have that, it's on May 18.
Okay.
The budget hearing will be the following week. The budget presentation will be the following week.
Okay.
I still have to clear that with the school, so that's still, you know...
What day?
Not set.
Yeah.
Friday. If I can get the school to...
Now, what is... How are we doing with regards to getting budgets back?
So we have all but, I think, I have... I don't have the Board of Health budget, but they're working on it. Don't have the Police Department budget because there was a lot of activity in the PD, and so I gave them an extension because of the search that they were involved in.
Right.
It been, you know, budget wasn't a priority at that time. So they had a pass. And then I'm pretty sure everything else is in. I got the debt schedule from Amy once we got this paperwork back, which I have to then share with everyone, haven't passed it along yet. And I just plugged that in today.
So and have we passed along what budgets we've received to the advisory?
As I got them, I sent them to the advisory committee. When they came in, I didn't even open them. I just forwarded the email directly to them, so they saw exactly what I saw.
Okay, great.
And I also sent them the budget that had everything entered in it so that they could see where I...
What you have so far?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I beg to... There's a little bit of a difference, because we reviewed it in 12:15, but I think we have a lot of the ones, like the animal programs, or the whole select and general government stuff, we haven't seen the town hall stuff, we haven't seen...
I got that one. When did I get that? January 31st, after four, so it was... Yeah, so I got it yesterday, because it was after I left, day before yesterday. So, yes, yesterday.
From my standpoint, tell you what we have, there's a little bit of a... But I'm just saying, we have a lot of third whatever. We're still waiting on a budget, so I'm sure we'll get it in the next few days.
Other than the selectmen's budgets and the debt budget...
And the PD.
The PD, I don't have the PD, I don't have Board Health, but I just got the selectmen's budget. It's been a second. I got it yesterday, so...
Day before yesterday?
No, I got it yesterday.
Oh, okay.
It came in after I left.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah, and there's no problem, because if you don't get it, you're probably... We'll call also, like, you know, we have to follow people's names, like the expenses, people on that day, they also play it. But you're saying you received all of them except those two?
Some of them are paper copies that some of the non-tech savvy people wrote them. One... One person called me, like Calplum, she sent an email, they didn't actually have the spreadsheet, so I filled it in, but I forwarded you her email.
Right, no, the council on age, they have to redo up the Excel spreadsheet, I guess, but there's a lot of them, so I just tried to ensure the selectmen understand.
The council needed to do theirs in the spreadsheet.
What's that?
The council needed to do theirs in the spreadsheet. That was sent to you.
I needed the Excel spreadsheet. I got a scan or something, and then there was a Medicare that was in a different line or something, so you're gonna clean it up and send it to some point.
Why? Okay.
All I'm trying to say is that I think...
Okay, so would you do... Okay, so you think you're doing okay? You seem to think you have fewer than what Kelly thinks that you have, so why don't we do this? Can... What order should we do it? Should you send back over just the aggregated spreadsheet, or do you want to just...
We've already got the aggregated.
You've already got the aggregated spreadsheet?
The one I sent to you guys yesterday is the same one that they got.
Okay.
So they have the aggregated one, they do the individual ones. So some people don't have Excel, and they can't do it in...
Okay, so if you've got the aggregated one, then my thought would be, and did it... And I didn't open that email, I apologize.
That's true.
Did it annotate which ones you... Like the PD and the Board of Health that was still getting... That you were still waiting on, or they're blank?
Yeah, it says in the columns next to it. And I sent out a caveat today that I got all of this stuff. I'm supposed to have two weeks to compile it.
Right.
I put it on the spreadsheet.
As you got it.
And sent it, but there are imperfections in the spreadsheet because I haven't worked on it. I've just been entering data, so...
I'm just saying. So have you looked at the aggregated spreadsheet yet that was sent yesterday?
She has that.
Okay, great.
Today, she's supposed to report to us on the next meeting.
Okay, great.
So I'm fine. I think we're basically two weeks ahead. I had a conversation with...
Okay.
Forward to plan to control, but I haven't told the PD as far as, but we agree on this far as schedule, timing, everything else. I didn't realize, like, for example, you had a meeting discussed about coal or anything else, and I already done previously, so, you know, we're almost there to make a decision on that, but we're gonna wait till we get more information and all of the other budgets, so I think we're a little on the front, but...
Okay.
Or we'll continue to prepare.
Okay, and I know I saw the request for the representative for the school budget come through as well. Brad, was... Were you or Tom gonna do that this year?
I was gonna try to talk to the school. I think we're gonna go through, like, department liaisons.
Right, okay. We'll talk that then. Yep. All right. Anything else around the budget?
Six weeks because of the change in the spreadsheet, so it's pushed back.
I'm sorry?
Because the school budget apparently is a little bit pushed back because of the change in the state, you know, governance and all that.
Yeah.
So a lot of that, the schools not even beginning until the 14th of March, I guess the public safety part, so...
Yeah.
Was it 14th of January? I thought it was 14th.
Yeah.
So we're a little bit ahead of that.
All right. All right. So that's probably enough on that, then. Any other concerns, questions, dialogue for this? Okay, great. All right, second water operator discussion. My good sirs.
The water commissioners and the water department are here to look at possible options for a second operator. Let me just give you a very quick little bit of information about our system. We have just under 500 service connections, which is about 1,500 people, or about 45% of the town. And we do that with our existing employment structure, is one superintendent full-time, one half-time administrator, and on-call operators, secondary on-call operators, which cover weekends, time off, so on. Ideally, what we'd like to get to is a superintendent, a part-time secondary operator, the part-time administrator, and the on-call operators. The reason for this is that DEP operating requirements are increasing, testing is increasing, sampling is increasing. We've increased the size of the operations of our system. Couple of years ago, we did chlorine addition, which we weren't doing previously. So we're really not in a situation, in a opportunity to employ another full-time secondary operator. So we're looking at options. Can we split an operator with another department in town? Can we do a regional operator? Can we do a municipal agreement or a memorandum agreement between communities and share personnel? Or can we hire a part-time person? Don't know the questions, that's why I've talked with Kelly and asked that we present a request and get legal interpretation of what we may be able to do. So that's why we're here tonight.
So have you all had an ongoing discussion, or is it just... This is kind of the first we've talked of it?
Let me also say that this isn't anything we're looking to do this year. We're not looking to change our budget. We're not looking to change anything for this year. The water commissioners and the water department are looking at where we would like to be in the future, not necessarily this year, possibly next year.
Yeah.
And water systems can change, and hopefully it doesn't change for 10 years.
We've talked a lot internally about this for...
A couple of years.
Couple of years, yeah. And Brookfield doesn't have anybody else trained to run this water system, period. And it would seem like maybe there should be, you know, maybe somebody else, maybe that's employed by the town can be cross-trained to, you know, cover the water department.
Which is a situation which we had a number of years ago. We had a secondary operator who worked for the highway.
Department, yeah.
And that worked out great. That is not the case right now, but it certainly, you know, maybe it could be an option.
Maybe it could be an option. Right, right.
And Brookfield being a small operator, we're the smallest in distribution size and we're smallest in treatment size, and the mass DEP regulations are designed to deal with, you know, the city of Boston and the small communities get drug along with all of the other requirements, so...
So as a superintendent, I guess, what's your preference?
Well, I don't need another employee. So when things are going good, I can manage it by myself. When I take a vacation, we're left kind of begging and pleading on neighboring communities, help us out. It's work, but it's...
It's not necessarily sustainable.
It's not sustainable.
It's not sustainable. That's a very good way to put it.
You know, can he handle the, you know, the public safety side of it and, you know, the health side? Absolutely. Absolutely. But it's not really our best play.
So when... We use our on-call operators for weekends. And when Dennis is out on a sick leave, or if goes on vacation, the operator, the on-call operators cover it. That's walking a very fine line. They're actually supposed to be here the whole time. That's... That's in the regulation. We're walking a fine line.
Right.
And we need to get better at that. But the system is run in compliance with all of the regulations. We provide a good service, but looking down the road, we ideally need to make some modifications.
To keep it going.
Is this a steady need for a part-time person, or is it more hit and miss? Like you said, when you go on vacation, Dennis, or...
It's hit and miss.
It's hit and miss, and that's a... That's part of the problem. We could use him 40 hours a week this week. We could use him 40 hours a week in three months.
Right.
If he's out sick for four days, we need him for four days when he's out sick. We could possibly use him as an on-call operator, fill in as an on-call operator.
And obviously, it's very hard to find somebody qualified. Basically, anyone who's qualified has a job. They can't leave their job.
The other thing is, and before we get somebody to come in, he probably needs to be here for 40 or 80 hours to walk through the system and familiarize himself so that he knows the system and he knows what to do.
So do we have anybody currently in the town employ that's interested in training to become a part-time operator?
Not that we are aware of.
Not now.
Right, okay.
We had asked at one point that if highway, and it doesn't just have to be highway, was to look at hiring another employee, could we in some way provide some kind of incentive to that employee to get licensed? This is part of our question, legally, how do we do that? You know, can we, or how do we do that?
Can I say something on that? Because my... Well, my only concern with that is if you get someone from highway to agree to do that, and he's out for a week, now you just took someone off of highway.
That's part of the problem. That is exactly part of the problem.
And that's exactly what would need to happen.
Are we aware of any other towns that are in a similar predicament as us, where regionalization can make sense?
All of the small towns are in tough situations. East Brookfield has gone through some modifications of their operations. They hired a new superintendent. They have just hired or are training...
They hired, yes, they have their...
A second operator. And they also, I think, have a... Another on-call operator working at the highway.
Right.
West Brookfield had a superintendent in a full-time, their system is a little bit bigger, and a full-time secondary operator. He just left, the secondary operator. So they are out looking for people.
Would it make sense for...
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, and actually, I'm glad that you were going down that road, because I'm wondering, have we reached out to West Brookfield about potentially making that a regional operator?
No, their system is more complicated than ours, and they really need...
They have a need for...
They need a full-time superintendent and a full-time operator. And our on-call operators, right now, are working very well. We're using an agreement with the East Brookfield, plus we have the East Brookfield, former East Brookfield superintendent is our on-call operator. Dennis's father is an on-call operator, who was our previous superintendent.
So I reached out, and Pioneer Valley is in the process of regionalizing some within their area, and they sent me a sample.
Like a float operator?
Well, they sent me a sample agreement, it's an intermunicipal agreement between the towns where they share a secondary operator. Honestly, because this is something that's... I haven't actually pulled it up, ever read it. I have it, but I haven't read it yet. But I would think it would make more sense for the towns, for us to try and find towns that want to partner with us, and then we can hire a full-time...
Regionalized operator.
Regionalized operator that will work X number of hours in each town to create a full-time job, and then we share the cost of that person.
Just don't take vacations at the same time.
That's all.
But literally, that's part of the regionalization.
And even one of them may want somebody that's part-time that they can call on as well. So what I had done is I had asked if the water commissioners and the water department would be willing to reach out and kind of like...
Start the coordination.
Start the discussion and see if anybody would be interested in that, and that's kind of where we were.
Right. Just to kind of limit our area, the operators have to be within a certain time, distance from town.
Driving time.
So if you're a crazy driver, you can live further away, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
No, technically, no. Just checking.
But if you had a regional person, and he's gonna be away for a week, you could probably house one up somewhere.
So I guess it would depend on when we hire, if there's somebody local to one of the towns, if, you know, you get your...
It does have to be your town or...
It's... That's part of these jobs, is you have to be local.
Yeah.
That's just...
Right, but I think what she's saying is, does the distance have to be to all the communities, or can it be to one of the communities in the regionalization and have it still count?
It would have to be with all of them, actually.
I think that'd be a range of any community that's using their services.
We have a legal one-hour response time.
Okay.
So...
So one hour.
So one hour is a pretty...
But one hour's not terrible, though.
That's a pretty big geographic area. That's a pretty big geographic area.
It's not, because if you're, that's from the time the phone rings, one hour to be here. And it happens quick. When you're out to dinner, and the phone rings, or-
I see what you're saying.
It happens very quick.
So, so you're saying that if we, if we had a regional person, they would never be able to go to Boston for dinner, because they might get a call?
Not if they were on call.
Correct.
But they're not gonna be on call all the time?
No, but that's, that's-
And that's why, that's why I was saying, you'd have to look into housing for that person, so maybe send him down for Sturbridge for the week, the week that he's out. But that, that's all getting split up by whoever's in the regionalization contract, so it's not $100 a night.
It'll be interesting to see what Pioneer Valley's come up with, and how, and they're also working with a grant, because the state is really, really, really pushing regionalization. And I mean, really.
Yeah, I went to the-
And one thing to consider is, the shared resource to regionalization, that works really well when everyone gets an equal or pre-arranged share. Like, one town gets half, another town gets quarter, another town gets a quarter. This is more of a lumpy need. And so therefore, whatever agreement were made to the regionalization, there'd have to be some understanding that, okay, they are on, they are covering, say, Brookfield this week, so they don't get paid by Brookfield, and he's Brookfield at the same time, you can't be in two places at once.
No, that's, that's, that's a good point, because what I've seen in the past, and I don't know if the supply system's particularly positioned, but you have the parent town, for lack of a better term, and they pay the salary, doesn't matter where they're working, they pay the salary, and they collect the money-
Back from the other communities.
Back from the other communities. So the community, we own this person, per se, it may, we, Brookfield may not be the one who owns it, right? So in the long term, it might be some other town, and we sign on, and, because that's what works best for everybody. But for example's sake, we own that person, we're their full-time employer, we're their, we're their benefit provider, we're their retirement-
Provider.
And provider, and if they retire out of Brookfield, then we're gonna be the ones who are providing their medical insurance for however long. And then each town pays a percentage of whatever that cost is. So this town may need, you know, 50% of their time, so their percentage would be more than, say, East Brookfield, which only needs, you know, like, two weeks out of the year, or whatever. And then, these are just examples, they're not actual reality. But that's how I've seen them work, where a town owns the person, and then it's, it's split up, percentage-wise.
So those are the kind of options that we are, we're asking for.
Yeah.
And it may take it some time to figure that all out, so.
I think the reason that we're here tonight is that we just wanted all of this on the radar, so that nobody's-
That's right.
Well, decided, a year and a half, when the budget is like, we need this, because we've regionalized, and so everybody's on the same-
Right.
Or even to open that conversation with another town.
Yeah.
We need to have this conversation first, before we do that.
And I'm wondering if, from a, just from like a pure budget perspective, I would agree that it's probably a little bit premature that we need to have those dialogues with other communities. But I also think it might, it might warrant, and I'm just throwing this out as an example, potentially, at least budgeting at a two-day-a-week person, assuming that we could find somebody that, once they were trained up, would be basically on duty Saturday, Sunday, to, one, alleviate some of the burden on you, in terms of at least having steady weekend coverage, with the option that if that person was available when you were doing vacations, it might be kind of like an immediate go-to person.
And we, and we actually have some money for that-
Right.
In our budget, so we're, we're not far from it.
Right. So it might be worth at least, and I know other communities are looking for folks, at least testing the waters and seeing if we could start to bring somebody onboard that way. You know, it's just a thought.
Eventually, maybe the second operator could also be the administrative assistant, which could be another, I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to change where we're at now, because we, we're in a good situation with that.
Right.
But in five years from now, that may be a possibility.
Right.
But this is just to bring this to the table and talk about it. We're not in trouble.
Right, okay.
This is not an emergency.
It's not an emergency. Oh, no, we're actually looking like farther than like 30 days ahead.
Well, we've been talking about this for probably no less than two years.
Sorry.
And it was, we just felt that it was time to reach out and see legally what our options might be, and-
So why don't we do this? Why don't we put it not on for the next meeting, but maybe for, for two down the line? Give a chance to kind of review the regionalization and see if we, is that enough time? You're looking at me like a deer in headlights.
Well, I think, I think, one, that's kind of premature, and two, this is not the right time of year for me to have time for that.
Because of the budget.
Yeah, so if we can, the warrant, and, you know,-
Right, right.
-town meeting, so, and I'll leave this up there, but the, if we can-
I thought you were sitting violin in the-
I know, it's quiet up there now, right?
That's happening, up there, laying in front of the fire, firing.
Would it make sense-
Yeah, me too.
Would it make sense, you know, now that we've had this conversation, for me to ask our neighboring, neighboring town?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe, maybe they thought of it.
Yeah, because it's gonna be a lot better coming, I think, from you than necessarily-
Well, yeah, we can just talk about it.
That you start, that, you know-
Maybe they have a need, maybe they don't.
Discussion with them.
Right.
And our neighboring towns really are, that we can talk with, are basically West Brookfield, North Brookfield, and East Brookfield. And Sturbridge is just, they don't even run their own system that's done on a contract. And their, the system is huge, so-
And would warrant be too far?
Well, and we could go beyond, we could go beyond our, you know, adjoining towns, certainly.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think there's, there's actually probably, I think that dialogue is definitely in order, because I think we're all realistic enough to at least entertain, you know, figuring out, is it, does it stay a second operator budget, or does it become a second operator budget that we're handing over to somebody who has the primary ownership of the, of the employee, or is it-
I think they have the right idea by asking if you are gonna back them if they begin these discussions.
Yeah.
Because if they go to these towns and nobody is interested, then regionalization's out of the question.
Right.
Well, and another, another thought we've had is, is there another position coming to Brookfield? We don't, we don't know that. Are we looking to, you know, combine, and I'm making stuff up, but combine the highway with the cemetery? And maybe there's an opportunity for us to add some coverage there, or some other position that we're not aware of? We just want to throw this out there.
Right.
And it's the same, like Brad, like you just said, you know, if we need him for 40 hours a week, means that he's gonna have to be with us 40 hours a week.
Right.
Which would mean he won't be at his other jobs. So that's part of the-
The challenge.
The issue to try to deal with.
But it's also part of the budget.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
The water would be, the water department would be paying that portion of the budget.
Right.
And, you know, we'll say, for example, a highway department budget would not be funding that person's full salary.
Right.
So there's, it has the potential to work, maybe someday.
Maybe someday.
Yeah. But thank you. Just wanted to open up the discussion and see what our options are.
Do you want to vote to give them your blessing to go forth and begin the search and conversation and collaborate-
I mean, if you want it on the record, I'm happy to do that. So can I get a motion from one of y'all?
I move that we authorize the water department to investigate options for regionalization and/or other methods of bringing on a part-time secondary operator to assist them in their operations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's all we got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, actually. Let's move on. Town hall parking spaces discussion.
I didn't add that.
I don't, yeah, I don't know why it's town hall parking spaces.
Oh, yeah, that was on, remember, two times before you asked to put it on. I did not ask to put that on.
Okay, so let's-
Mr. Heller wanted this on. Maybe you did something-
So, I don't think there's anyone here to discuss this, so let's move on.
So, I didn't, I didn't put it on the agenda, but we, we're having issues with not having enough parking spaces. And I didn't know who, there were clear carpet there, I didn't know who they belonged to. It was, it was 12:00, they belonged to Mr. Heller and Tip Top. And so I sent him an email and asked him if they were his, and if they were, to please not park them overnight during the winter in the parking lot. And if they weren't his, if he knew who they belonged to, would please let me know. So in asking him not to do that, because, because they were left there overnight and we couldn't plow, and because of the way they were placed, we didn't just lose their two spaces, because plow couldn't get in between them, we lost the whole back row of being able to park it. So he was upset and concerned that he may have done something wrong. And I explained that he didn't do anything wrong, it's just that we need to have the parking lot cleared, so that we can get the town trucks in there to plow.
Yep.
In the interim, Dennis, Ryan was really excited that we had done that, because it's very frustrating for him to try and plow around them all the time, because I guess this is where they normally park their vehicles. So what I would like to ask is if, if the board would be willing to make the, just the spots just around the building, well, now with what's going on with the chimney, for town hall use and town hall employees. Because there's not enough spaces for everybody. So, and just in the winter, people, I want, I don't want people walking and slipping in ice and falling down and-
So does he not have parking over here?
He does. He has parking, has a parking lot behind the building, and he's parking in front of this building.
Well, he can't park in front of the building during, from November to March, or April.
Okay.
Because there's no parking on the streets.
And so in the alternative, I said, if you are gonna, not to park overnight, because there's room for both these vehicles behind this building. If you're not gonna, just if you are gonna park here during the day, to park at the far end of the lot.
Yeah.
And they stop parking at night, and then they, but they, but they're not parking at the far end of the lot, and the last couple of nights, they've been in the parking lot again, so. I'm getting complaints, I'm dealing with complaints. That's the only reason it's here, and that's why, you know, that's the only reason I'm discussing it. But I thought Mr. Heller asked to be on the agenda.
Now, this was something that was on a few times back.
I know when it was on, but I thought that it was placed on it, because Mr. Heller asked to be on the agenda.
Right.
So, so that's why this topic came up in the first place. But they're not doing anything wrong, all they did was ask them that they would please not park there for the winter.
Right.
So.
Yeah, because I know-
Overnight.
Kelly, could that area be designated as part of the winter parking ban?
Selecting can absolutely do that, and like I said, I wanted the front to be for town hall business, for town hall employees, and town hall employees, like, so if you're not here for the town hall, then please leave the spaces open for people who come here and work here, because there are not enough for everybody.
But the back parking lot, in total, should be the winter parking ban, because even if they park over back-
Right, which is why I asked them not to park at night there. And I have no issue with using the parking lot at all, it's just that I get complaints from people that they don't have anywhere to park.
So Kelly, is the problem that they're parking overnight and, and/or long-term parking in the town hall parking lot, in back?
The problem is that the plows can't plow around them, because they're parking there when, so now, and I think what happened is that they're, they're parking there overnight, and they moved it if the weather's gonna be bad. But you were at the department head meeting, Ryan was very excited that there was nobody in the parking lot, he could actually treat the parking lot properly, because there were no cars in it. So he's on board with the whole, please don't park there at night thing during the winter. In the summer, it's a non-issue at all, but in the wintertime, it is an issue, so.
Yeah.
Because I guess I'm trying to understand, because you say people have trouble getting to town hall, but that to me is not a problem at night. And whereas clearing the parking lot is more of an, the parking lot needs to be clear after hours when they're, when everyone's gone, so that Ryan and his crew can clear the parking lot. So I'm trying to, there seem to be two issues here, I'm trying to-
Yeah, there are not enough parking spaces during the day if the town hall is busy-
Okay.
For everybody.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the real issue, and that, you know, people come and go and whatever, and we've lost, like I said, we've lost all the parking lot directly behind the town hall. It's not an issue when those parking spaces are open.
Are open.
Oh, so it's because of the issue with the chimneys and the bricks-
Yeah.
We now have-
Right now, we've got a, we've got a parking squeeze, basically.
Other than that, the only issue was not to have anybody park in the parking lot overnight during the winter, because the plows couldn't get in. And when they park there, and then, then all these spaces are gone, because there's snow in them, so no one can use them.
So years ago, I mean, just to give a little bit of history, when we first, like, really expanded that rear lot, right, at least one highway superintendent ago, the one request was, was not to have anybody park along the back of the building during the winter. But there were a lot of residents, I don't want to say there were a lot of residents, but there was at least probably a handful of folks that would park in the far parking spots because of the parking ban, if they didn't have enough parking inside the village because of, you know, for whatever reason.
You kind of overlooking the police station?
Yeah, the, the area overlooking the police station. Because it's not convenient, but you can plow around the cars if they're, if they're located there. But what happened, it happened that during that first snowstorm, that folks weren't thinking about the plowing and had left the vehicles right behind the town hall, which you can't plow the lot properly, if you've got anything in that row right there. So, and right now, because of that back row being like totally gone, I mean, typically we put up some sort of barrier for most of the backside during the winter when we're getting real snow, because we used, we would have people's cars get hit by snow coming off of the roof. So you can't, I mean, I know that we have it closed because of the chimney, but we typically, during the winter months, don't get to use those slots anyway in less temperate winters, because of the fact that-
We've had a lot of ice, there's been a lot of ice treatment, even though there hasn't been, Ryan was saying, he's had exactly the same number of events this year, even though we haven't had the snow.
Right.
So.
Right, so.
So that's, that's all this is, is it just-
Quick question, is there a sign that says, no overnight parking allowed?
There's not.
No, and that's one of the things that, that we-
I mean, we could get a sign, and then we have Mike Seary to enforce, you know, give them a ticket if some parts are.
Well, we could, absolutely.
I mean, it's like $150 for a sign, why don't we get it done?
Right. I mean, and at this point, really, it's just, it's, it's one set of people that's parking there, so. I don't think we even need to pay for a sign, we just need to, you know, consider what we're doing, why we're doing it, and then just talk to them.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I know the last two weeks have been very unusual at the police department. But I stopped out here one day, and this back parking lot was absolutely filled with 24 to 30 state vehicles.
Tripers and-
And if we ever had a need to get a fire engine out, it wouldn't have happened.
Nope.
Right.
And they actually, and I understand why, and I don't have an issue with that.
I'm not-
But when, the people who were here early, we couldn't leave, because all of our cars were blocked in by all of their cars. There was no way, we're here-
So fortunately, there was no need to get a fire engine out.
Right.
But if, and like I said, a totally unusual event. Hopefully, it never happens again. But that could have been a catastrophe.
Right.
Now, I don't know where they would go if they couldn't park there, I mean, like I said, unusual event, but when I looked out there, I said, the fire department could not get an engine out if they needed it.
Yeah. Yeah, it would have made more sense to rally all those people down at Lewis Field, rather than where they did it, but I wasn't in charge of the operation.
So I don't know if they'd ever go right to-
They actually used the fire station as a command location.
Yeah.
So they would use the fire station. That's where they were gathering, that's where they were eating, that's where they were, or they were doing their parking, so.
That's a little terrifying.
The dragon has risen.
So-
Like I'm listening to college radio again.
Um, so, you know, I think rather than, than voting like a generalized parking ban, let's, let's just try to deal with this from the standpoint of, I'll swing over and have a conversation.
Yeah, it's just because I don't, I want the, the spaces to be able- Yeah, it's just because I don't, I want the spaces to be able to plow, like I said. It's an overnight thing, don't take the spaces, there's parking behind their own building.
Right.
So, it's not like they have to use the on-street parking, I don't know if they're capable to do it.
I think the one, the one, the one thing, well, they're, they're...
They got extended or something?
So, their vehicles will fit, the, the one concern I would have is that if we do this, we need to have a talk with the highway super to make sure that they don't make it virtually impossible to get those vehicles out, so that people can get into the place of business, because we've had some history where, um, the plow operators will not be too particularly cautious about how, what they're leaving there.
Oh, yeah, they, they can't plow them in, that would be awful.
Yeah, so, so the big thing I would have is, is, I'll have the conversation to say, hey, make sure you, you tuck them behind the building, but the flip side is, we need to make every effort not to plow them in, because otherwise you're, you're land-locking one of our few going businesses.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, we definitely don't want to do that.
Right.
And like you said, they're not doing anything wrong, it's just a matter of being able to keep the parking lot clear.
Clear right now, so...
Yeah, and had, it's just, two cars, that you'd think it's just two cars, it's just two spaces, but because of the way they parked, there's actually six spaces that we didn't get plowed, because we couldn't get in around them, because of where they...
Yeah, but that was, but that was behind the building, that was when they ran the building.
And that was risky, and it's, I'm really glad I asked them to move their vehicles, because the next day the chimney came down, the next day, I was like, ooh, it was eight.
Yeah, so, um, so, yeah, we'll do that, and see how it rolls, okay. Um, department, and what's that?
Do we want to vote on a policy, or are we just going to just try and handle it formally?
I think you should just play it by ear and can't talk.
I'm gonna do that. Just, I mean, fundamentally, I say if we ask people not to park overnight, that's going to prevent long-term parking and leave it for, generally for people with business with town hall, and it's gonna leave it open in the week, overnight for Ryan to plow.
Yeah, and it includes the weekends, too, because the snow happens on the weekends, and the fire department needs to be able to get in and out of there, put their own vehicles in.
Mm-hmm. So... But, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to vote something where it's not like a wholesale issue.
Right, because, I mean, how many people park in this parking lot in the Apple Country Fairs, or...
Yeah.
So, it's, this is, this is just a really teeny-tiny little, you know, plowing table thing.
Yeah, okay.
Beth, I'm getting caged out for work, I've got about ten more minutes, so if there's anything you think we need to cover before I have to go and answer my call?
Uh, cover the accounting services contract, and then I think every, oh, and we're gonna be discussing my reopening my contract, so would you like to participate in either of them?
I'm sorry, what's the second one? The accounting contract?
Reopening my contract.
Uh, let's see. I will do, let's do your contract.
So, as you know, I was, there was a raise voted at a town meeting for everybody across the board. My contract has a dollar amount in it, so because the dollar amount is in there, the town was refusing to pay, so we voted at a town meeting, you know, we have to reopen it so that I can access the parts that were voted at town meeting.
Ah. And we did vote in it.
Yeah, the, the town did vote to raise her salary on the, on the floor, so I, I think the town's will on this point is clear.
Yeah.
So, I put what the actual one was above, and then the other one was just suggested language, I don't know, we already know what this year is, next year is the last year of my, of my current contract, so I don't know what, how you want to do that one, that what's voted at town meeting, or do you want to put in a percentage, or do you want to put in COLA, I don't, I don't know how you want to handle the last year of the contract.
I can tell you that my inclination would be to go with functionally town meeting, but...
Right. Would it make sense to modify the contract to say, or more, should that, should a greater amount be approved at the annual town meeting, or at a town meeting, maybe just in case it's under special also? And that way, if it does get increased on the floor of the town meeting, the contract will be compatible with that?
I'm, I'm okay with that language, I don't know exactly what to write in there to move that forward, because a lot of words...
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, what, I think it said what we would put is...
What is the police?
So...
Police is on a separate contract, but...
Yeah, but he's at like ten or fifteen percent, because you were playing catch-up, his, his contract had massive jumps in it, because you were playing catch-up from the neighboring towns, and he was so far behind in the salary, so he had very large increases. So, his was actually more than what we voted last year.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, my thought would be the language up to the point where it says, um, like through, where it says amount equal to two and a half percent, strike or federal COLA, and replace that with, um, or, or as voted at town meeting. What do you gentlemen think?
Which, which part of the contract are you looking at?
I'm looking at Article X salary.
Yeah.
The secondary proposed language that Kelly had provided.
I think it's the first page, oh...
As I say, I'm looking for...
It's page three of four in the contract, is the original.
I don't see proposed language.
No, no, she's just, she...
It's a separate sheet.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go, that's what I, that's what I...
So, is there ever, I mean, there's never a time where federal COLA would end up being more than we approved anyways, because we're always going to at least approve federal COLA.
True. There's a chance, there's a chance that we wouldn't go to full federal COLA, say, in a year where like federal COLA this year is like eight point nine percent.
Eight point seven.
Or eight point seven five. So, um, I know that we, last year, we, that was the hill we died on, saying we're gonna do it with the federal COLA, I don't know, are we doing it again this year or not?
So, that's what was part of the budget discussion next, next meeting, was whether or not you were gonna decide whether you were gonna do that.
Right, so I think by using the language as voted at town meeting, regardless of how that discussion comes out, it gives us that, that leeway relative to it.
Yeah, I agree with that, so two and a half percent or as voted at town meeting, whichever is greater for the fiscal year of 2024. So, if you decide to go...
And if 2025 changes?
I don't have a contract for 2025.
Oh, okay.
So, this only covers one more year.
So, really, one more year anyways, yeah.
Yes, it's just one more year, and if it doesn't work, then you guys all, then you can, you can move it through.
So, but I think, I just think it's, I, I just would prefer to do it that way, rather than, than state it as federal COLA, even though that's probably what we're gonna wind up with.
Mm-hmm. I, I like the idea of tying it to the vote, rather than...
I, I actually agree with you, I, I think that's, I like that idea as well, I'm perfectly okay with that, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's very simple, you know what? Some stuff is gonna be out of the, some stuff is gonna be out of our hands, we'll guarantee you two and a half percent, and if the town wants to give you more, it's up to them. So, there you go. Do we want to...
So, make a motion, do we have to read the whole thing, or just say that we want to strike out federal COLA and...
To replace Article X salary in the current contract with the language as amended.
Yeah.
There you go, there's your motion.
That's your, that's your motion right there.
What did you say?
So, so actually, what we would do is, uh, replace Article 10.
In the employment agreement of Kelly Robbins with the town of Brookfield.
Yeah. Town of Brookfield, the following language, and then it goes back up.
Yeah. So, I make a motion to replace Article 10 in the employment agreement between Kelly Robbins and the town of Brookfield, uh, with the following language. Effective January 1st, 2021, the town shall pay the administrator the sum of eighty-two thousand five hundred for fiscal year 2022, effective July 1st, 2022. The salary shall be eighty-seven thousand three sixty-eight for fiscal year 2023, beginning on July 1st, 2023. The amount shall be equal to two and a half percent or as voted at town meeting, whichever is greater for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. And then...
All right, thank you, excuse me.
You all got it, you gotta go?
I gotta, I gotta go.
Oh, we still have a quorum, yay.
Three boss calls.
What's that, three boss calls?
The people that pay my day job go, unfortunately.
That is a struggle when you...
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm gonna step on the hall and triage this, I might be able to defer it.
Okay, great. All right, so let's talk about the, uh, the town of Brookfield contract for town accounting services.
Did you want to do the department heads, or did you want to skip that until...
We could probably skip it, I mean, I just, yeah, it's not really that critical right now.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to see if, you know, in the past, we've always spoke, you know, someone from the select board would speak to board people.
Yep.
Do we want to continue that?
Yeah, I think we do, I think we haven't done it.
I don't know if you and Tom, I don't know what your bandwidth is.
So, uh, bandwidth is always a struggle for me, but I'm willing to give it a college try, for sure, so, and are we, are we talking just in general and bring back reports about like what's going on in the town, or are we talking more along...
I don't know.
Strictly for budget? Because historically it's...
You've been around more, so I would...
Historically, it's been focused more around budget, though I think that there, I, I think if we were more, let's call it disciplined in terms of the selectmen reaching out on some regular cadence to, I mean, I think one thing that's been good is, I think that the monthly department head meeting, granted, I only probably, I only make it like probably once every second or third month.
Brad said something, came to it.
Yeah, that, that was good.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe you...
Maybe we just start doing a rotation with the department heads.
You can rotate the department head meetings, and then you can see what's going on and hear what the department heads have to say.
I mean, my, my bigger concern outside of, because I, I feel like the communication's pretty good with everyone in the town here, with the exception of, I just personally have concerns and would like to have outreach more with the school in Tantascro, even though we don't have control over those things, you know, I've heard from a few different people now, like, that they need a new roof over at the school, and what are we looking at potentially?
It's about, roughly around six hundred thousand dollars, within the next four years, we've, um, I spoke with Catherine about it, I think the first couple of months I was working here, I had gone over for a tour, and I said, why are there so many buckets? And she said, well, we keep patching them, and every time we patch the roof, something else, you know, the water runs downhill, so it's, keeps finding...
And what else is there outside of that? I mean, if she hasn't said that, what else hasn't been brought up?
But she did say it.
No, I know, but I mean, she did at that point, but what else was out there? I mean, it was because you brought it up, you said there's buckets on the floor, what if she brought that up?
Well, I, I don't...
You know what I'm saying?
So, prior to my arrival, I don't know what kind of communication the board had with the school to begin with, but she provided us with the list of, of...
But there's capital improvements.
Yeah, and what they've got planned, and so we discussed the roof, it was, we're gonna need a new roof, and we can't pay for the whole thing ourselves, she uses a lot of, I believe it's school choice money to do capital improvements in the building, she's done some amazing things with that money, she's, she's done wonderful things for that building with that funds. Um, Brookfield's actually extremely lucky to have her, she's very innovative outside of the box.
No, I think the school is much better than any of the schools.
She's great.
And I think one of the challenges, I think one of the challenges is, I wish they had prioritized the roof ahead of some of what they've done, right?
So, we know that some...
But we, but they've also, and let me just, I'm sorry, I apologize, but let me just finish, is, is over the last, um, they have also histor, historically applied more than what's typically done of their school choice money to their budget, so they've put in, they've, they've contributed more than six hundred thousand dollars over the last four to five years back to operational expenses, when they could have just squirreled that money away for the roof, so that's where...
Well, so, well, what I told her was that now that I know that you're, you're gonna be seeking fifty percent of the roof cost from the town, that I will put a warrant article on, and we will create a fund to cover this, so that in five years, the money's actually already there.
But they're really gonna wait five years to do it?
Well, she says that that's when it will have to be done, so, within five years. So, we put fifty thousand in last year, we have enough, I want to put seventy-five in this year with, with free cash. So, we're, we're not, that's, that's the plan with the roof, is that we are, we are aware that it needs to be done, that we're saving, um, I spoke with Maya about the roof yesterday, met with Maya, they have a tiny little grant that we can apply for that could go to it, I see tiny, it's ten thousand dollars, but when your roof is six hundred thousand, no, but that's one of the things that they really look to see, is, is people taking, being proactive about things, knowing they're coming, and not just being reactionary, being prepared for it, so, we're looking at that sort of stuff, we need to actually implement a roof inspection program here or anything, so...
Right.
It's a list of things to do, but as far as what are we doing with Tantascro, I have no idea what the board has done in the past.
We've had a hand raised.
To ask, to answer your question directly, uh, in my five or six years, I'm sure Beth will back me up, the school board, Deb Boyd, and the people that she assigned to the school committee for the elementary school have been the most diligent and proactive as far as providing information to our advisory committee, internal questions, and being on top of things, and between Tom, myself, Steve Gillis, and, uh, a couple of other people, um, we've had no issues whatsoever with response and information coming back, so...
So, you guys, you guys have a good idea of what's coming?
We have, uh, a general idea, is what Kelly has said, but I feel confident just based on, on my experience, the people that are there, now again, the new gentleman, Steve, I met him once, he came to several meetings last year, and Deb sort of had him training, he goes back to Deb now to answer any question that we might ask, but as I said, I think they have the systems in place, they're very astute as far as gauging what state laws might come in, projecting things, the volunteers that are on the school committee for the elementary school, I know I've met a couple personally, uh, some of the old dogs, the regional school committee, um, they're all top notch, very, you know, they're young, they have kids in the school systems, they're very honest, so, um, I, I just wanted to give you that, my experience is generally positive, uh, and you guys really have to chase them for anything, it's just, uh, again, there has been a transition now, so we'll see how that works, but, um, I'm confident, I think we'll continue the way that they fit.
The board is a finance, a nominal financial manager, so she is great, but we, she's very proactive, I've dealt with her when I was in Holland, and she's, we all knew what was going on.
Yeah.
But she's always nice enough, her husband in the past, he comes to the town meeting because we always have citizens who are concerned about, you know, it's, you know, it's a large budget, and we really have no control either, you know, we voted down, or we don't have a light item, just ability to do anything, but she always comes and makes a nice presentation, she has in the past, we always ask her to do that, because again, you know, she knows a lot of the things, so...
Next.
Yep.
So, it was very fortunate to have the school systems that we have in town, uh, and a lot of the school, a lot of the elementary school, but it is enhanced with the school choice. Uh, one of my concerns has always been, uh, with all the new construction in town, obviously there are more kids, I would assume that the school choice availability is shrinking, uh, and since the bulk of our tax... Uh, and since the bulk of our tax money, and it goes to the school system without any say, I've always thought that the selectmen or the town should have a very good working relationship with the school board or school boards to, you know, not find, not have to go up and find out that the roof is leaking, but that it should, you know, that should kind of be brought forward. Uh, you know, what's the history with, with school choice? What's the forecast? Where are we headed? What are the class sizes? I mean, and, and the school budget is, number is so big, it gets thrown out on the floor and doesn't get baked, but if they wanna give a $25 raise to the cemetery, they'll, they'll argue for hours about it. I mean, it's so, I just think there needs to be a very close relationship between the selectmen or the town administration and the school committees, so that you know what's going on, since it's such a big piece of the pie. I just, just my, just my thoughts.
Yep, thank you for that.
I think he's agreeing with you, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I think, I think you're agreeing with Brad.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, just to answer that, I don't think you need to be troubled, but I think proactive and take-
Well, yeah, no, I'm talking about being more, being proactive.
Because right now, I think it's the town administrator and advisory committee or have been sort of the, well, before the town administrator, basically advisory committee being the ones who are-
Who are going over and-
Going over everything.
-being part of it, yeah.
And, uh, down to minutia, I mean, and Tom definitely down in minutia, so I'm speaking with Tom off to the side as far as-
I can't.
His feelings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't, actually.
That's where the britches are having a-
That is one of the problems with a three-person board. One of the problems of having a three-person board, is that we can't even like, like-
We're a $10 million organization with three CEOs that can't talk to each other.
I wonder why the communication's dysfunctional.
But, but every year that we've been together on the committee, his first question when he goes in to ask the elementary school, uh, people is, "What's the trend for the school choice? How many people are gonna be there?"
Yeah, and, and, and it sounds really interesting to do that, but here's the problem with that. Okay, regardless of the buildup in the town, right? There are years when we've had fewer people and fewer kids in town total, but the fifth grade doesn't have any room for school choice, right? And then the, the next year, it's the second grade, and then we've got, you know, holes all over some other grade, because you know what? All it takes is like, you know, a power outage and seven years later, you don't have room for kids in school choice, right?
Well, and I could be-
It's the butterfly effect.
I could be wrong on this, but is there like something like 30 new houses being built right now?
That's about right.
Yeah.
That's not something that I would know.
That's something out.
No, I know, but I just-
That's about right.
No, but I think it's-
That's roughly the right number, that's roughly, that's roughly the right amount.
Right.
And so, I mean, and, and it's been something that Kathleen has been warning us about for years, is that periodically, we will have these spikes, you know, or just straight up not room, right?
And then they can't come.
And then they, and then they can't come.
They can't come, that's it.
And then, and since they can't come, we just need to, but the flip side of it is, right, and hypothetically speaking, with the, with the tax base growth, right, that it's at least, as expensive as that is, it's still less of a burden, because you've also got the upside of the revenue, right? So, so it's one of the pros.
So, for school choice, according to the, um, the DOE, and a prior, well, I think everyone wants to know about chapter 70, right? We spend roughly, Brookfield spends roughly $12,000 a year per child, that's school choice, and we get like vibrant, vibrant tuition.
Right.
So, it's, it's good if it's full.
Right. So, um, and, and functionally, right, the, the larger concern would be if we hit the point where we don't have any room for any school choices, it also means we're, we may be starting to hit that tipping point where the school's not picking up, and that's a whole other cattle.
It's a whole not of cattle and fish.
Right. I don't think we're anywhere close to that, which is the good news. The bad news is we need a roof.
Yes.
So-
We need roofs, so we're parading money away.
And six years, and, but six years sound, if they've got buckets everywhere, so here's my concern, and, and-
They don't feel that it's, it's an imminent catastrophic failure.
But that didn't happen overnight.
Yeah, but, and here's the other thing, is any moisture like that could be potentially doing more damage than-
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna wait five years if it was my house.
Yeah. So, so we, well, I, I, they said they were gonna, Kathleen had said at the time, and there's no commitment in this statement, because we were, she was giving me a tour of the school, this was a casual conversation.
Right.
And I simply said that I will start putting money away, so that if we pay half, it will be there when the time comes. Right.
You know, it's kinda unfortunate, I mean-
So, I followed through on my promise that that's what we did with, with the free cash.
Hindsight, obviously, is 2020, but I mean, we could've possibly thrown a roof into this bond that we just went for.
But it would have to be voted at town.
No, I know, I'm saying it's too late now, but I'm saying-
Yeah, we could've put it on last year.
If, if this had been talked about and caught earlier.
Yeah.
But I mean, would've, should've, could've.
Yeah. Um, anyway.
I thought, excuse me, I thought the decision was made though to do any criminal, okay, that was a joint decision, I believe. I don't think we ever considered voting it all at once, did we?
No, when we discussed of the town's portion of it, it was, it was discussed that it would be saved for incrementally, based on the date that they were planning-
Targeting.
-targeting for the replacement.
Right. So, I mean, I think we were saying, Brad, as far as what we just heard, this is the question of judgment, whether, you know, the rate is gonna be more or less than whatever they, they didn't consider playing. So, that's, you know, I hope I wouldn't have always second guessed the school board or school committee right there.
So, when I put this up, actually, I wasn't, I know we went off on the tangent on the school, it was really more, you know, I'd like to at least talk to the boards more often, but I don't wanna step on anyone's toes.
I'll, I'll like to our next meeting if you're gonna come. I mean, I'm very happy to-
I just, for, for me, it's just getting caught up with things.
Yeah, so, so, so I think, so, so, so I think what we, I think this has been a good discussion, I think there's, there's two different questions, really. Internal town department communication, cross-communication with the schools, right? And, and functionally, it's two separate things, it's, um-
Your potential is even, it's, it's slowing down. It's not competition, nor is it a spring.
Okay, anyway, so I'm gonna talk over the, the background noise. Um, so, anyhow, um, so, excuse me, did you have the bandwidth or, or interest in being the liaison with the school for the budget process from the board of selectmen?
No, cause it sounds like advisory's already doing it.
Okay.
They'd like one from both.
Okay, then yes, then yes, then yes.
The school wants one from both.
Then yes.
Yeah. So, and then, I, I think what I'd like to do is, let's start, let's start scheduling or planning which of us is gonna be at the department head meeting, because rather than, and then find out if any of the depart, and I guess we could eventually break out the departments, so that if for some reason, I, I prefer the department heads deal with you first, basically, and then if there's something that needs escalated to one of us, we can just contact.
Well, I mean, what I've noticed in talking to the different department heads, I mean, it's, it's one thing when you have them up here for Kelly to talk to, I find it completely different what they have to say when I go and talk, yeah, yeah.
In their space, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, it's why I suggested that if you really wanna know what's going on in the department, not to call them in here.
Right.
No, go down, go visit them, in their space.
To go and go see where they live.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, um, so if we wanted to, let's just put it on the agenda for maybe the next meeting, for us to like just go down the department list and, and-
Okay.
And line that up.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll each pick departments and what have you, so. All right, um, did you wanna talk about town alerts?
Um, so we are signed up for it, it was free. Are, are you up to speed with this?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, so, the towns around us have all subscribed to this thing called My Town Alert, and it's an app-based program on your phone where you can get live alerts. Kelly's set up, most of the department heads are set up.
Okay.
Um, it's just another method of communication to residents, supplemental to what we already have.
All right, have we put it out there that people can sign up?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Well, yeah, no, not yet.
No, I haven't, I, I was sharing with Lindsay.
No, I haven't, I haven't yet. I told her that we're about to and I have everything, I just haven't other time.
It needs to go up on the town website and posted-
Yeah.
-here at the town hall and, um-
Actually, if you could do, if you could do that and then have-
Put it on the Facebook.
And then have, and then have Lindsay share the web link for the-
Okay, I can do that. Did you check it for typos? The flyer.
I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at anything.
Okay, so great.
Yeah, it's, it's free, it's a non-invasive app, it doesn't ask for any personal information, and you can sign up, there's a few towns that are on, that are using it currently in Massachusetts, and you can click on them and you'll see the alerts for all those towns. And they'll automatically show up when you open up the app, the alerts for those towns are on your screen.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Yeah, and, and we put up that there's-
My Town Alert, how cool is that?
Yeah, it's, it's supplemental, it's not the reverse 911, but the more people we can reach-
Right, and in the media, they're used to it.
So, it can't be primary.
No house phones.
No house phones, got it.
No flip phones.
All right, anything else?
Will that work for computers also, people who don't have a phone?
No, it's only app-based.
Well, Chromebooks.
If it worked on my, on my desktop.
From the administrator's side.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, just-
So, probably only if they have a tablet or Chromebook.
I was gonna say, it's-
If you can get the app through the-
I hope it's a deal breaker.
Through the Google Chrome. It's free, for the people that have them, so.
Yeah, and if they want it, you know, it's just, it's just another way for us to, you know, reach out to people and say, and it's not, so we can, we can send out something that, you know, basketball signups or this date in here, or we can, we can say, there's this week, not that we would use this as an emergency service, an emergency reform, but if-
Hey, it's really cool.
Brian is out and he's got, he's got, sees there's a tree down and the road is closed, he can go on his phone, if you want, if he has the time to do this, he could be dealing with the emergency of the tree down.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not saying that this is, but that's something that could be used, this tree is down, we're, we're removing it and it cleared at whatever time.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
Council on Evening can use it to, to let people know that, uh, there's coffee hour and, you know, there'll be extra pastryers.
Right.
Cherry yogurt has been changed tonight, though.
Extra pastry.
So, all right. All right, House Source Accounting Services, folks, we digress.
Yes, we do.
I apologize, I gotta go.
I thought I was gonna get free and then pull me back in.
Okay.
Sorry, we need you liaison for the, um-
All the departments.
Secretary. No, I don't, I don't get any. Carrot is, thank you.
So, um, so this is for FY 2024, where there, was there anything specific that you wanted to call out in the-
No, I just wanted you to see, he sent it to me as a docu-sign document, and I couldn't print it, and, and I said, "No, I'm not gonna sign this, the board needs to look it over, I'm not just gonna go ahead and reengage the company."
Right.
Can you technically sign this?
I can sign, he, I-
Oh, we voted her to write the sign-on contract.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I, I have stated that I will always bring them to you unless it's-
Right.
So, if it's a blanket castle form, which is a, if, that's a form that we have to sign every time we get state money.
Mm-hmm.
I just signed this now instead of waiting for a selectment meeting, and it's really helped to roll grants in from the state. Um, I can sign reimbursements for chapter 90, so that if there's snow incidents and you guys can't meet for five weeks, we're not borrowing money to cover our snow debt, that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the kind of stuff that I would sign without discussing.
Mm-hmm.
If it's procurement, as the chief procurement officer, and it's, it's a project that's already been approved, I go over the documents and I sign the contract.
So, all this is, is just the next contract for '24?
It is.
The only thing I noticed, I didn't know if it was a change from the prior year when I read through this, is that it says minimum of six onsite visits a year, it seemed to remember it used to be more, but if you're comfortable with that, I'm okay with it.
So, this is, this is in here, because if, whoa, it's late, I don't have nice words. If there's a disagreement here, they can say, "We're not gonna come to the town hall anymore. We're only gonna come six times a year, cause that's what's in the contract."
Right.
And I've seen that happen with other towns, where there were departments that were extremely aggressive toward this business, and they were, they were grossly overstepping their boundaries as the town, with the accountant demanding this, 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 and this, and she said, "No, I'm not coming back, I'll come in six times a year, that's it. Everything has to be scanned and sent to me."
Right.
So, that's just something you need to be aware of, that at any point, they can say, "We're no longer doing onsite visits other than what's required, everything has to be scanned and turned in," um, which means that every single, and I don't know who would do that, whose job would that be, to compile all the things that are normally given to the accountant and scan them for like the bill, give the bill schedule, or whatever it is.
Right.
So, you need to be aware that that is actually, I haven't, I've only seen them use it once, but that's something.
Sounds like they don't typically do it without cause.
No, no, I don't think they do do it without cause.
Okay.
But it doesn't say they need cause either.
No, it doesn't.
They went up roughly $5,000 a year, cause I think we're paying, no, I think we're at 46.
So, it went up a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's not that much.
So, do we make a motion to approve it on, or?
And this is for FY '24 is starting in July.
July of this year, yeah.
Okay, so-
I mean, there's absolutely nothing wrong with the work, you have good company, lawyers, good accountant.
I've been working with her a little bit, she's good.
Do we want a motion to approve the contract then?
So, I make a motion to approve the town of Brookfield contract for town accounting services for year 2024.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 350th, uh, committee appointment for Christina Fardella?
So, she would make the fifth person to the 350th committee.
Great. Do we have that motion?
Oh, so I make a motion to appoint Christina Fardella as a member of the 350th anniversary committee.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, capital planning. I didn't run this, hold on. It's slow today. Yes. Um, capital planning. Um, capital planning. So what did we want to discuss relative to this? This is the older plan and we're getting towards the end of it actually, as terrifying as that is.
We, so is this brought up because I brought it up?
Yes.
We can skip over that.
Okay, so we're not ready to talk about that today?
More just that I would like to try to reinvigorate that committee.
Okay.
You see?
Good luck.
We have to find him first.
Yeah.
Right.
Gee, you know anybody to volunteer for before?
One.
Go ahead.
Committee one. So, um, I think one of the things though, let's just, while we've got this on hand, right, fundamentally, so we have the, we have that, the bond issue, right, what is that gonna do with regards to what this was in terms of amount?
What?
I'm trying to, looking at the capital plan, and originally we had the police station at $150,000 a year, but our bond, our consolidated bond, it looks like is. Do we know what the amortization schedule is gonna look like on this, because I mean, fundamentally, that would be one of the, one of the pieces for the update for this.
We'd have to ask Amy if she has it, I know that they sent it to us, but I, I don't know if that goes along with the top.
But I think one of the things that we want to do is, because I tell you what, one of the, one of the things that I see at work is that it's a lot easier to have people come in and edit than it has to have people come in and create.
Absolutely.
So, um, I, I think one of the thoughts that I would have is, um. First of all, let's review what's already on here that's been done fundamentally, and then I think from a kind of financial governance perspective, did the accountant ever get us like revenue estimates for like the next three to five years, or is that something that they do, or is that something we would typically do through our own purview?
Revenue for the, to the town?
Yeah.
I, I think that that would be a shot in the dark by anybody who did it, but I don't know who was normally projecting, they projected every year on the recap sheet, but they only do one year at a time.
Do only one year at a time.
They are traditionally underestimated by, by.
A considerable amount.
12% every, every year, even with kicking and screaming this year, it was still only 10, it was 10% underestimated.
Right, I think one of the things we should do is for the, um, if we don't have a committee stood up yet.
Mm-hmm.
One of my recommendations is can we make one of the agenda items for the February department head meeting, bring what you see for your department to be your five-year capital needs.
Yeah.
Um, because let's start by getting the department heads to contribute that as part of the department head meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then as we start to look for people for a committee, we can say, hey, here's this draft plan that came from the department heads.
Right.
Have at it, so, um, and get them actually involved in the process, potentially as a collective.
Yeah, because I haven't really talked to you about it, but I mean, some of the highway stuff in roads, just quick summary, chapter, uh, highway receives 168,000 from Chapter 90 funds, if you were to repair our roads back in 2019, it was like 6 million if you were to repair them all. The lifespan used to be 25 years, I think, on roads, now it's down to 10 years. And if you.
Because the materials.
If you, if you look at the materials and everything else of what it would cost today, I figure nine, call it 10 million.
I was gonna say.
168,000, you know, to chip away 10 million, it's gonna take you 59 years.
Right, and that is not the 10-year turnaround.
Right.
So, um.
So yeah, I mean, obviously we want grants, but we're gonna have to figure out a plan, whether it's monetary or something, because things are gonna get bad and I think all the other towns are in the same boat, which means we're all chipping at the same grant money.
We're all trying to, we're all trying to bring home the same.
Right.
The same rewards, and some of it is also the how you, how you prove it out too, so. That's one of the reasons I think why we're going after Kimball Street, because like, let's complete that internal portion of the village.
Yeah.
Where we've already proven that it's, it's income eligible fundamentally.
Right, right.
And we're eligible for that money, so.
So under number two, we've already bought the fire engine.
Yep.
That's included in the borrowing, so I'm not sure how you're gonna break out your fire truck to, uh, police station ratio, because it's all lumped together, but I'll leave the math, I'll have people.
Yeah.
So, so the easy way, to me, the easy way to do it, since we did lump it all in together and it's all, it's all in the same note for the same period, you just list, uh, you just list it as, as municipal, municipal borrowing long-term and list that and the Sawmill Dam loan for the, for the two different things and just reflect it that way fundamentally, since those projects were recommended, at the time they were recommended, instead we can just put that down.
I'm assuming the Felton property either is a bill, is the 18 Clums Street?
It is, yep.
Okay, so that we're hoping to pay off this year.
So did you put this together or was this put?
No, sir, this was put together well prior to my existence.
This, yeah, this was put together actually by a committee with Kermit, Peter O'Connell, myself, Al, Kathleen Hosterman.
Marie.
Marie, yeah.
I think there's a, there's a document, a planning document somewhere, I don't know who has it, but.
Yeah, I still have a copy of the text.
So, I mean, there is a, glad Marie had the will to get up to speed, but it's like three years old, I guess.
Yeah.
Yep, um, and then the, the citizen committee came to us and said, we don't need a senior center yet, right? So they, so they actually said, you know, hey, we, we want to work on our programs first and then decide if we need a, a house for it. Um, there was a stabilization fund that was, that was mostly for vehicles, new and used, that I think we are continuing to periodically suck some amount of funding away in.
The QKLA North Pond treatment, that's done.
That's done, right.
Money's put aside and.
Yep, uh, computers.
Telephones, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the computer software, all of that was done, it's all been upgraded.
Yep.
The telephone system's been upgraded, at half the projected cost, actually less than.
Right.
Um, we installed the remaining snow fleets, that was done.
Right, so boiler was done, or boiler and circulating pumps, I believe, is done.
Yeah, those are done.
Right.
Computers done, that's done.
Great Room is still, needs to get done?
Yeah, we're still trying to find somebody to give us a, a estimate on the repairs.
50,000 seems low.
So, so that we can go try and get grants, but without a bid, we don't, we don't have, without an estimate.
You haven't been able to get anybody to give you an estimate?
Nope, we've asked several people now and no one's ever come back.
Wow.
They come in and they go, wow, this is a great room. Thanks, what do you, can you fix it? And what would it cost?
A lot.
Yeah, we'll have to come back and do that.
And they're like, here. Okay, all right, so then, uh, the.
I don't know if this lift is actually ever gonna come together, I, I'm gonna actually reach out to the contractor, we finally found somebody who would do it, and then they were having issues getting the engineering and then getting, because it needs to be a commercial lift, it can't be like a home lift.
Right.
And they're having difficulty finding a vendor that can actually make the lift and the engineer do it, so, I don't, I don't.
Peter Martel did say he did carry a lot of people, so.
Yep, all right, so.
The police cruisers are on a rotating schedule, I believe, I'm not sure, I haven't been long enough to see that actually happen.
So, we fight this fight every year fundamentally, that's why we put it on the plan for being like most years getting one, with like, it's basically four years in a row and then one off. Um, I think that's mostly what we've been doing.
I don't know if the police done their coffee.
They did.
They did?
Yep.
Okay, so that's all. Um, I don't know about the fire repair, we've been, it's an ongoing thing of purchasing protective clothing, breathing, air compressor apparatus.
I think engine two is the one we just retired.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, yeah, and then station windows and doors, he had been asking for.
Well, we get the money for the doors.
That's right.
Although we haven't purchased them yet, we do have, the bids were stale and they, they exceeded their, um, they're way past their expiration and costs have gone up so much since.
Is there garage doors?
Yes.
They haven't, no, they haven't.
Yeah, quotes are only good for so many months.
Oh, I thought you meant the doors are only good for so long.
Oh, no, 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 the, the quotes are only good for so long, so we have to go back out to bid on them again.
Right.
And the quotes came in, they were not apples to apples.
Yeah.
When I was reading them, um, they, some of them weren't gonna get rid of the old doors, we had to have them removed and provide all the electrical work, they were basically gonna drop doors off, others were installation and removal was included and, and no electrical, and then there was, the, then the third one had all the bells and whistles, but we didn't have enough money for that one and it was stale anyway, so we need to start that process over.
Okay. Um, all right, so we did get the replacement generator.
Yeah.
So.
So, you got the generator?
I believe so, yeah.
What did we talk about, or you said we got 6,000 expenditures for just the wiring?
Correct.
Okay, that's all it's been taking up so far?
Yes, but I believe the generator is.
It's contracted for.
It's contracted for.
So, and we've been in touch, speaking of generators, have we been in touch with the Town Hall Improvement Committee about getting a quote for at least wiring up the town hall to receive a generator if need be?
Nope, I haven't talked to them about that.
Okay.
You, I would think you could wire up off of, this is a big one, the one out here, right?
Just putting in the right junction box so that you can bring power into the generator.
Right, right, yeah.
The key is to have the switch, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
It costs like 1,500, $2,000, well now they're probably $3,000, but.
Yeah, but that generator should be used to power this too, yeah, back.
The one to the fire station?
Yeah.
No?
Well, no, so, so you'd have to, we'd have to do very extensive like plumbing and wiring in order to do it properly.
Is there not a conduit between the two?
No.
Oh.
So, um, but yeah, um, one of the things we were talking about was including, yes.
Sorry, I'll run a second to the town hall, there's a fire alarm system everywhere in the horizon for town hall, and this place could go up like a fiasco, and there is no fire, I, I was shocked to hear there's no fire alarm system in this building. There's the Town Hall Improvement Committee would dead, it's not economically feasible really, so I figured there's, it could be mad applied, so.
I also just noticed, there's no fire alarm, um, suppression?
No.
No, there's no fire suppression.
No fire suppression, no fire, anything in this building.
Yeah.
It says drive 44.
That's brick on the outside.
Turns it into an oven. But that, this is the conversation to have around the capital planning though, right? Is that if you're gonna do those type of improvements, then you need to be budgeting.
Because didn't the old town hall burn down?
It certainly did, and history may not repeat itself, but it does rhyme.
Right.
So, um, so there was some money that was assumed would be required for the, for the Felton property, um, we haven't necessarily budgeted for any of that, and library hasn't, library and historical commission hasn't necessarily asked.
They haven't, they haven't asked, but I know that there's some discussion about parking between the two.
Yeah.
Like that's something that we can, that's one of the things, Brian, that we can hopefully bring and go bring.
Bring to the department head meeting.
The department head meeting.
Right, exactly, um.
Septic issues with the town?
The what?
Septic issues, remember.
I wasn't aware there were any septic issues, but they aren't there.
There was a, at one point where they were trying to budget for a, a, a new or enlarged septic system.
Oh.
That was one of the reasons to get the Felton property, is that you now have enough property that if you need to redo the septic system, you can, so.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
That was in the bed, bed moved them.
No, there was good reasons, there were, there was a lot of potential good reasons for doing that, if you're thinking more than 30 days in advance, so, um.
They've got like 25,000 dollars a year for them.
Yeah, originally planned for that, yeah, um, if needed. Uh, and then, yeah, so I think what we do is we, I think the rest of this, we take it back to the department heads, and probably send them out the old one if you would, and just say, hey, take a look at yours, we know a lot of this stuff's been checked off.
Is this the old one?
This is the old one.
Okay.
Do you have it in the Excel format?
No, I don't, no.
Karen, would you get the.
I, I have it in.
Is it in Excel or is it like?
Yes, it's in, it's in Excel, it comes up like this, but it's.
Oh, all right, so we can send that out.
Send it out.
Department heads.
Send it out to department heads, say, hey, come, come prepared to talk at the February meeting regarding, you know, we, and let them know, we, we know a bunch of this stuff has been done, we know a bunch of this stuff may be still sitting out there.
Hmm.
Did Tim come for a particular reason?
She's definitely on the agenda that I know of.
Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry, I keep hitting the microphone, my favorite, is that making a lot of noise? I apologize.
Okay.
My mic's off anyway.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I think that's the, I think that's the approach to take with regards to this until we get a committee, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
You know, and get, get them all invested in it, and I think actually, one of the.
I only brought it up because I had asked Kelly about it and she said, but nothing has really been done with it in a few years, and I was like, well, we should probably bring that back.
And here's the thing, historically, it's almost been, I hate to put it this way, it's almost been like inflicted on from the outside and the department, it, it turned into, I think a lot of the reason why that, that committee failed.
Mm-hmm.
Was a, a lack of productive and enthusiastic engagement from the department heads, so maybe if they own at least putting the proposal together and then it's more of a review process, there'll be more potential for getting it and maintaining it and making it part of their process, so, and then having the Capital Improvement Committee be more of a review step than a, I'm having to skull drag people in to get the information step, so.
There's a, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's a proposed project, South Palm Beach, funding saw through state budget earmark 25,000, does anybody know what they're for?
Um, I think we were trying to get them to help us put sand back where the beach is and make it more handicap accessible, there's a walkway there that's, uh, got handicap accessibility issues.
Can I give you a kiss now or?
Later.
The, um, you know, I talked to Anne Boney a couple of times and she was like going around in a circle and I tried calling some of the state wildlife and it's just, I, I think Claire was before and said it was about 35,000 to do, you know.
It's probably 50 now, yeah.
So I'm sort of in the roadblock and, but I haven't alerted UQLA what we're trying to do and if, you know, I figure we get, I just say, oh, Ted, right, and my wife and a few other people who started doing some social media, maybe we'll get the state to push a little bit, so.
Yeah, because every year they ask us for earmarks.
Yeah, so, but, so one of the, one of the.
But it, but what helps is if we have a shovel ready.
The hiccups with this is that we don't lay in.
Yeah.
How do we?
And, and in our contract, we can't change anything on the beach, we can't do anything with it, we have to make sure it's exactly the way it is.
Do we not want to?
In the contract, in the.
It allows maintenance.
We can re-nourish the beach, that's in the contract.
But re-nourish and make handicap accessible might be two different definitions.
No, that, that's, that's a totally different subject.
Exactly, so that's, that's where our hiccup is, if we, it's different if we're gonna replace the sand and make it to what it should be, as opposed to somehow making it so that handicap accessibility is feasible there, we have a glitch in that the state is the one that would need to approve the project and, and the state, so they won't earmark money for Brookfield for a state project.
Right.
And so that's where we're catching in kind of like a circular.
We need some political push, so.
Yeah.
Can I get a quick, can I get a quick history lesson, why don't we have that, at what point did that transfer over to the state and what does it take to get it back?
The beach was owned by Oak Home, all of that land, all the way from the pond, all the way to the beach was Oak Home.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it got divided up and unfortunately that section went to the, went to the state along. along with the state Fish and Wildlife property. So, the state Fish and Wildlife owns the beach, and they sign an annual agreement with the town that we can run the beach and that the agreement is renewed every year. So, we, there are a number of things in the agreement that we do, we don't do. Our conservation commission, when we tried to put the sand down there, said, oh, you can't do that. Well, it's in the agreement, you can do that. But it got hung up with our own conservation commission.
Yeah, two years ago, Susan.
Like two years ago. So, you're right. The other thing is that the beach is actually named, I mean, the beach itself is named for a handicap veteran.
That's, that's an interesting...
And I believe the state, when they rebuilt the boat ramp, did the parking area of the beach and the handicap ramp, which is not effective. Now, when you can get them to fix their error that was 12 years old, you know, not gonna happen.
So how do we reclaim this land?
We never owned it in the first place, and we probably do.
How can we purchase it or take it?
So, here's the proposal that I put forward about two years ago. We own the parking lot over at the Knew Lodge. I said, give them that, we'll take the beach. And Ann Goby said, you can't do that.
Why, like?
She didn't think Fish and Wildlife were going to...
She didn't think, but it could be asked.
I think it was an option.
Right, right.
It was a way of getting the beach under.
I mean, we don't need to go through this today, but I'd like to have another...
I'm giving Jeff all of the documentation for the beach for the last 10 years, so...
I'm also chairman of the South Pond Beach, which is formed in the last year. So we have five members who are actively pushing to get the stuff the way it should be.
The last agreement actually, the last agreement with the state actually has a clause in it that we can charge for the use of the beach.
Which could then go into revolving, then that, which could go into revolving fund to start to...
The other problem is that it's state-owned, licensed to the town, so it can't be a town beach, in other words, you can't say it's president's home.
Right, no.
So, just to answer your earlier question, the reason why the, the handicap accessible sort of come to the fore in the last couple of years is because the town, the state, with its improving the ramp and the boat ramp and all the other stuff, they put this floating dock to act...
ADA compliant floating handicap.
That, that precludes anyone from going down the ramp and just going into the shallow water and getting to the beach, which handicap or maybe disabled people could do in the past. Something I liked was to get down. And now with the, with that dock there, you gotta go into the deep water, it's, it's not...
Well, that might be, that might be a help. I mean, that is, that is not on the beach property. That is on the voter access property. You could maybe go to them and ask them to put a ramp off of that to the beach.
That might be a lower cost, but, but again, it's...
Well, it's their property, they would do it.
Right, right. But I'm, I'm just saying is that it's, just having gone through it a little bit, it's just the political situation is a little bit daunting, because I, from everything I've seen, again, this is my personal opinion, the fishing gang people, they would prefer if they just put brick rock there and just do fishing here and there, rather than having a beach. So that sort of pressure that, that pushback is...
It's the push me, pull you that's going on there. So, I, it sounds like though, I, I like the idea of approaching the state about a project to, to be able to get to the beach from that dock in a safe manner for handicap folks to make it accessible.
The only problem is that the two handicaps faces are up at the beach, and they would have to walk all the way down from those two parking spaces all the way down to the boat ramp, to go down the boat ramp to get to the ramp, to get all the way back to the beach. I mean, it could, it could provide somebody access. You could, somebody could drive somebody down there and walk along. They could at least get there.
Yeah.
Right now, the handicap parking at the beach, you can't get there from here.
Yeah.
The two ramps, the, the one ramp that is semi, that's not even paved, is washout. And the other ramp is not, I mean, a walkway is not really a walkway, so...
Okay.
Right, but any, any push would be great. And I've talked to all of you about it, so I think maybe the, the push, I think, is, it's a win-win situation, because, you know, handicap people should be able to use the beach.
Yeah.
Todd Atlantic, from Todd Atlantic is the regional director, and he's worked with us on a number of different occasions. He knows Brookfield well. He's the one that issues the annual agreement. And Terry Smith is, so there's, the boat ramp is provided under the voter access and the subcommittee of Fish and Wildlife. So, like most state agencies, you have to go through a number of hurdles.
Yeah, got it, okay.
Right, and so I, I volunteered, have been volunteered to try to start that process by my boss, so I will make a statement, pointing back to do that.
All right. Okay, can I, can I motion to approve the minutes of...
I make a motion to approve the select board minutes for July 11th, 2017, January 1st, 2023. Two sets, one, 11, 23.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got minutes and reports from other departments. Sorry, it's my notes. We've got firefighter Donna LaFleur, 30 years. My goodness. And she has like 40 some odd with the EMT, correct?
Yeah.
Firefighter Charles Edgar...
Edget.
How's my glasses on? 21 years. And then Damon Sargent, one year. And then Captain David Martel, 33 years. And firefighter Kayla LaPorte, one year. His name doesn't even look 33. Well, sort of.
We have good water in the town.
We do have, well, we didn't until we started chlorinating it. Anyway, um, let's see here. Uh, they did provide the eight calls for, for the period, and then eight calls, it looks like, for November. And then 13 calls in December. Apparently, we set things on fire during the holidays.
I don't know, Christmas trees, lights, candles.
Right, and then we also have minutes from the, um, joint meeting with the Board of Health. Yep. All right. I believe that is it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second, all in favor, aye.
Is there a, is there a, is there a, just, uh, can you pass on some information? I've been waiting up to...
Is it relevant, relevant to the...
Relevant to the budget.
We adjourned, we, we adjourned.
We technically adjourned.
Maybe the coffee's in the end now.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. That works.
Can't discuss it, but...
Yeah.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye. Thank you.